Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 27 Oklahoma City Plan Commission. If you have pagers or cellphones, any similar devices, if you would turn them off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you have any questions about how we conduct our meetings, on the back page of the agendas, which were available outside on the table, you might want to glance at that. If you are not the applicant and you are here to talk to us today about a case, we have a sign up sheet. Those are available on the table outside as well, and we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll receive the minutes.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move we receive the minutes. Receive the minutes, not approve.
I did say receive, I think.
The minutes are approved last time, and they weren't approved, they were received, I'm like.
I stood corrected, last time.
Last time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive the minutes. Cast your votes. Let's see, well, there we go. That helps. They're approved. Okay, next item is continuance requests.
Okay. We do have a request to withdraw case, item B-16 on the agenda for PC 10 470.
Anyone here to talk to us about the case today? Motion?
With continuance, or withdrawal, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw item 16. Cast your votes. That's continued, or withdrawn.
Okay, we have two other new requests that came forward for item B-5 on your agenda for case PC 10 473 to be withdrawn, and for item B-9 on your agenda for case PUD 1622 to defer that until December 8.
Same question. Anybody come to talk to us about those cases today, items five or nine on our agenda?
Move the continuance.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the withdrawal and the continuance. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Any continuance requests from the public today? If not, we'll go to the consent docket.
Okay, there are two items on consent. Item one is case PC 10 474 to rezone 1237 Northwest 48th Street, and item two is PV 098 to vacate the final plat of PACOM.
Same question. Any of the items, sir, go ahead, Pat.
I have a question. I mean, it's on B case history. Oh, this is the 27th. Is this the 27th?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm fine.
Okay. We have a motion. My question, anyone here to talk to us about items one and two? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item three is ABC 867 for an ABC 3 overlay of I-2, CBO, and DP zoning districts.
David, give your name and address for the record, please.
Everybody, Joel will be over here, sorry. David Wanzler, 718 West Sheridan, Oklahoma City. We are here to talk about an ABC 3 application for Sunshine Cleaners located at Northwest First and Classen. It is for a taproom and beer production facility. Joel Erby is our business partner on the building, and he is the owner of the brewery, so I will let him take it from here.
Okay, thank you. If you would give us your name and address, please.
Joel Erby, 5209 Deer Run Court, Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74074. And I am putting the brewery and taproom in the Sunshine Building. And do you have any questions about it?
No one has signed up, commissioners?
I have a question. If we approve this, is there any way for us to limit its use to the sale of beer in a taproom?
It's an ABC 3, so I would think not, but...
No, I mean, it's just, we're just approving a straight ABC 3, regardless of what their intended use is.
The only limitation would be the, just the size of the facility, and it's there on the hatched area on the north into the building.
Oh, I see. I see.
The hatched area is where the taproom is going to be, and so that's where the actual serving of the beer will be.
So as a practical matter, yes, I'm okay with that. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on that?
I want to comment on the application for a second. I can't see why anybody would object that a brewery can't sell beer. And it just seemed to be really silly that you couldn't. So I approve, I move approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item three. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item four is ABC 868 for an ABC 2 overlay of S P U D 662.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, what's before you today is an ABC 2 application. The end user will be a Hideaway Pizza on the corner of Northwest 50th and Western. And just like a brewery should sell beer, we think a pizza restaurant should likewise be able to sell beer. This is a site that you remember. This was at one point a spud that was done for Chesapeake that was going to be a convenience store. And our interpretation of this is, perhaps this is a better situation for the neighbors. Rather than a 24-hour convenience store that sold beer, now you're going to have a great local restaurant concept, the Hideaway Pizza on the corner. We know of no protest. One of the questions raised by one of the commissioners was what does Bishop McGinnis think about it? We do have a letter supporting this application presented by Bishop McGinnis. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we ask for your approval.
No one's signed up, commissioners?
I tell you, I've grinded my teeth over this application, mostly on a kind of theoretical basis. This is the first time we've seen any of this property that was included in the, what I continue to think of as Chesapeake PUD. And so, you know, that was a very specific plan. It was presented to us as a very expansive, albeit, but specific vision of, you know, what was intended to be done with this property. And clearly, we've all known for a long time, it was not going to be that, so... But this is the first piece of it that's come to us. I have a little bit of, you know, concern about what's going to become of the rest of this property, but I also have to remember that before any of that happened, this particular little piece of property was Zone C-4. And so, of all the things that it might have grown up to be, this is probably one of the least offensive. I have not received any phone calls, or protests, or expressions of concern. So if there's not anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter today, I'll take a deep breath and move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item five was withdrawn. So item six is C 6850, the preliminary plat of Chisholm Creek Village.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates here on behalf of the applicant. We were here before you a few weeks ago with a zoning case for this, to change the zoning to R-2 in this area. It's an infill project that is made up of, our client has acquired all the lots in blue, and they've reached out to those empty tooth that are not included in this application at this time, but they've been in conversation. The lots as they exist today are not served by paved roads. There is some utilities in there, but as part of this preliminary plat and final plat, the utilities will be all brought up to code, and the streets will be built to city standards, public streets. And we agree with all the TEs.
Okay.
Is there anybody signed up?
No one's signed up.
I think this will be such a wonderful thing to have, this raw land actually built out, so I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item seven is C 6851, the final plat of Kennard Ranch.
Good afternoon. Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main, here on behalf of the applicant. This final plat is in accordance with the preliminary plat that was recently approved. We agree with all the staff comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No one's signed up. We've looked at this several meetings. We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item eight is PUD 1625 to rezone 6601 Superior Avenue from PUD 856 and I-2 to PUD 1625.
Sam Gresham here to represent the owner.
Your address?
400 Northwest 23rd Street.
Thank you.
The property was, had a PUD previously in place on this, on rezoning this property. The use was exactly the same as the use we're asking for now, except that, the provision in code that required, or the ordinance that required, resident manager required that the storage space be less than 800 feet. We're asking for a resident manager to be allowed on this property because some of these spaces that are intended to be leased for RV storage are 1,200 feet plus. So that's really the only difference between the previous PUD and this one.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? Questions of Mr. Gresham?
Motion to approve.
Do you agree with the TEs?
I do agree with the TEs. I would like to add one thing. One of the provisions, and the owner called me and asked me to do this because he read through the list of allowed uses, and it said something regarding a mixing plant, a concrete mixing plant. And he said, well, there's a clear distinction in his mind between a central batch plant and a concrete mixing plant. He wants a standard concrete batch plant as being what is allowed on this property. I know that doesn't make any sense, but one, he seems to think is, well, I'm sure he knows exactly what he's talking about, is one where they mix the concrete in a vat and then put it into the truck. The other is, it's just, the trucks actually do the mixing, and it comes out of containers. He may never do it, he just felt like, the way it was worded in terms of this PUD document, based on permissive use for that kind of facility, that you shoot it at a PUD would cover both. Okay. I didn't know if there was a distinction, and he wanted to be clear that there was. He didn't like the bigger one. He thought the one that was in the...
Well, it doesn't sound like you need an additional TE if JJ says it's covering stuff.
I'm happy then.
Commissioners, any other questions?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Item nine was continued. Item 10 is S P U D 926 to rezone 1701 North Classen Boulevard from C-4, CBO, and UCD.
Good to see you again. David Wanzler, 718 West Sheridan, Oklahoma City. Sorry, I'm late, sorry. No, no, I just wanted to wait. This is an application to rezone the corner of 16th and Classen into a mixed-use development. Our design and civil engineering team is here to talk about the project and present it and answer any questions. We have Adam Landman with AHMM, and June Crabtree with Olson &amp; Associates. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adam Landman with AHMM Architects. We're located at 29 East Reno Avenue. So I wanted to, thanks first of all for hearing us. Second of all, I wanted to kind of outline the project to you quickly, if we could stay on the first slide here. This is a proposed 55,000 square foot, 685 feet residential and commercial mixed-use development. And we've got 38, just to kind of give you an overview, we've got 38 one-bed units here. We've got 10 two-bed units, and we've got about 3,600 square feet of ground floor retail space there along Classen Boulevard. I wanted to, if you don't mind, take a minute and walk you through the site plan, if we could switch back to the site plan. So some of the prominent points, and I'll start with just sort of the building massing. We've designed this in such a way that the building massing sort of hugs both of the street frontages. You'll see there along Classen Boulevard, as long as, as well as addressing 16th Street. Starting in sort of the northeast corner of the site and working our way around, you see that we've proposed a lane closure, the right-hand turning lane onto 16th Street from Classen Boulevard. Here, we're proposing a series of improvements to the streetscape along Classen Boulevard, as well as widening that pedestrian walkway. As you turn that corner and enter 16th Street, again, you'll notice some street front improvements there on 16th. Here, not only is there landscape, but also we're proposing additional exterior patio zone. This is meant to sort of extend that retail, that ground floor retail there, out and sort of activate the street frontage there on 16th. Continuing west in the site plan, a couple, quite a few things are happening here, so I'll just take you through them one by one. First, this idea of buffering with landscape sort of continues around the entire perimeter of the building. You'll see a series of planters that separate the residential units from the pedestrian corridor that we've put out there. There's also a five-foot walkway proposed the entire length of the site along 16th Street, and extending all the way up Classen Boulevard to the borders of our site. Finally, you notice that there are, we've proposed a series of public street parking spots along 16th Street there. These also include a series of street trees, which we feel are appropriate moving towards the residential district of the plaza, the residences to the west. At the end of that little run there along 16th Street, you finally see our primary entry into the private parking on the site. This is a 24-foot wide drive entering into the private parking where we've provided 48 parking spaces. That drive is separated by 18 feet from the adjacent lot there. And taken together, the drive, the 24 feet, the 18 feet, and the landscape buffer puts our development approximately 47 feet from the adjacent lot before we start going vertical. Real quickly, the north border, you notice, with Brahms, we've just continued this idea of improvement via landscape, and we're proposing a series of improvements along there. And also, we're taking advantage of that cross-access with Brahms off of Classen Boulevard for a secondary entry into our, into our site. And if we could jump to the next slide, I'll kind of jump into some of the massing and the ideas here. If I could direct you guys down to the bottom of your screen there at the elevation, this is the south elevation along 16th Street of the proposed development. The project takes advantage of the topography of the site here. Everybody, if we're familiar with it at all, this is a pretty significant sloped site. And so what we've done is, to take advantage of that, is we've stepped the building in regular intervals, about two and a half feet, four times across the length of the site from the west to the east. This is sort of a reaction to the two very different contexts that we're dealing with architecturally, one being the commercial corridor of Classen Boulevard, and the other being sort of the residential neighborhood of the Plaza District, and moving towards that. So again, a couple of things happened because of this. One, the sidewalk gets further separated from the private residences because of the raised stoops that are created by utilizing these steps. Two, the building begins to step down towards the residences on the far west end. You'll see there illustrated. It also, by nature of that step, we're able to add a fourth story on the Classen side, which we think is appropriate, to get sort of a prominent ground floor retail space there, as well as three additional units above that that are raised higher in the air and take better advantage of some of the views to the surrounding context. Just noting, again, in this elevation view, I think it's really interesting, the slope of the site and the trajectory of that fourth floor actually matches our third floor on the other side of the site, which we think kind of keeps everything in a nice even feel architecturally. If I could get you to just look quickly at the three images up above, these are computer-generated illustrations of some of these concepts, and it gives a little bit better idea of the development. So you can see that the building is highly articulated. It moves in and out and creates a lot of interesting spaces along that street front. But also, this integration of three distinct zones, sort of the private residential zone, the public walkway, and that public parking space beyond is clearly, we think, articulated in this design. Finally, I'd just like to touch on the cladding material for the project, which we are currently looking at. You'll see an architectural metal shake product on the exterior. It's a very good weathering product. It also, it also comes in several prefinished colors, as well as the natural metal finish that you see illustrated here. So I think that's about it for the project. Do you guys have any additional comments or questions?
What is the building height at the western end of your project?
At the western end near the residential, that is 34 foot, 6 inches.
So it's essentially the height of a two-story home?
Correct. If, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Question. How many units in total, did we say?
48 units.
48 units?
Correct.
And you have 48, how many parking spaces?
Currently, we have 48 parking spots in our, in our plan.
Are you counting the diagonal parking on west?
That does not count the diagonal parking, which would obviously serve as overflow. It's public parking, so we can't reserve it for our residents, but it would serve as sort of an overflow zone if needed.
Have you guys read the staff report?
We have, yes.
Are you agreed with all the temporary, the technical evaluations?
Yes, we...
No EMD sidewalks? We're going to do that?
Correct. The sidewalks around the entire, the street frontages, which we do currently have covered in the plan. And we're aware of all of the other technical requirements which we'll be working through in construction documents.
Okay.
We do have somebody signed up.
I figured we did.
And I'm wondering about the sidewalk on 16th Street, since you've got cars' nose-in parking?
Yes.
Cars typically will stick their nose a little bit over the point of the curb?
Correct. What we've proposed here, and what we typically do in those situations, is add wheel stops to prevent that from happening, so that the cars actually won't pull.
Because you and I walking together down a five-foot sidewalk, one of us is going to follow the other.
Five feet is not that wide.
Correct. We've, so the way the curbs lined out, if you look at the site plan, it continually adds a little extra space to that sidewalk, which we find to be quite nice. I don't disagree with the width of the sidewalk necessarily. I do think that we've prevented the cars from pulling over that curb with the wheel stops, and we've found that to work in other situations.
I assume this needs Traffic Commission approval, or do you have it?
It does need Traffic Commission approval. Now we've spoken with the Traffic Commission, and there's a couple of studies that we'll do as we, as we move forward with the proposal.
Yeah, absent that parking, you don't have enough. To Mr. Cooper's point.
And I do think that's an issue here. When we have these cases that come to us that require Traffic Commission approval for parking, it's, it's a little bit, it's like, what do we do if they don't get it?
Well, we make it a TE for, I mean, that's one option.
So it comes back to us?
Well, if they don't have enough parking to meet the code, they'd have to rethink it somehow.
Wait a minute, it says, it says in the staff report, 47 parking spaces shall be deemed to sat, deemed to satisfy?
That's what it says.
Does it satisfy?
Correct.
Or does it? I mean, I get, shall be deemed, but that's different than it actually does.
Correct. They're setting their own parking requirement.
They're setting their own. So what are we to say how many it should have? How many would it have to have?
It would have to have one and a half spaces per unit for one bedroom, and two spaces for two-bedroom.
So it's 20 for the twos, and then 1.5 times 38. You guys know what that number is?
If I could jump in and address that really quickly.
Well, just first tell me how, what the number is.
So if we were to do 38 units times 1.5...
That's 38 and 19, that's 57, plus 20, that's 77 spots.
Correct.
I thought you said 48 units.
We currently have 48 units and 48...
10 two-bedroom. So 77 would be the requirement, and you're 30 light.
And that's just for the residential, right?
Correct.
It doesn't include any of the retail, or the restaurant, or...
Yeah, it's a little thin.
So if I could address that, understood. It's been our experience, and we've done both level and mosaic over in the Deep District, where we did follow the parking standards and get the correct amount here. It's been our experience that that parking tends to be a bit of overkill in these spaces. There are typically during the day, a lot of empty spots, and even at night, a lot of those people are parking elsewhere, using other kinds of transportation. We also have a certain kind of user group that we think is going to be renting these specific units, these one-bed units. And of that user group, we think they're going to be a lot more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. However, we are definitely providing one spot per, per unit that we're building. We also have the ability here to build in, if you'll notice on the site plan, there's an additional eight spaces that if we needed to, we can add those additional eight spaces moving forward if we start to see this to be a problem. The final note I'll make on this is that the development team is looking into other alternatives that may help in the future, if that comes to be. Right now, we don't anticipate the parking that we're asking for to be a problem for this particular development, or for the residences. We think it's going to be very appropriate.
I think my problem with, with parking, I appreciate your sentiment and your argument, but as you go west down into the plaza, parking is a significant challenge. And so I'm, in my mind, may have no basis in fact, I'm projecting a trend from Classen down on into the...
On 16th Street?
On 16th Street West, more dense development and perhaps more retail. So I'm concerned about starting out short and then adding more traffic on down 16th to the west, personally.
It's also the case that since this, the on-street parking can't be reserved even for, not only not for the residents, but not for this development, people who are using the plaza, especially on weekends, may be parking here, you know?
That's not an unusual length to walk down there, to some of the attractions when you park in the neighborhoods, et cetera. So that's, that's my concern, is personally, and, and the fact that frankly, from the requirement, you're 77 minus 47 is 30, you're, that's a, that's a, it's kind of a not-close number. It's a significant variance versus, you know, 10. 10, I'd say, gosh, might be worth it, but 30, it's a hard sell for me.
It is, it is a different number, and again, I would just say, just, that's, that isn't just sort of us saying, hey, this is how many parking spots we got. That's us having done several significant residential projects in Oklahoma City, and sort of taking that experience and saying, here's what is really being parked in your parking lot, versus here's the requirements of, you know, extra parking that's never really going to be used in that lot. So we're just trying to apply our back experience here, and again, I think a spot per unit is, in our experience, very appropriate for these sized units.
Well, we've got a protester we need to hear from, so we'll...
Excuse me, just, just one other question. What is actually to the north of this property?
Brahms.
Brahms.
Brahms, and they'll share an entrance on Classen. And Brahms is apparently going to rebuild that store. It's been there 20-odd years at least.
I mean, I like the development. I like to see something go in on that corner. I'm certainly, because it's, can be kind of a gateway on into the things that we're trying to do down on Main Street, Classen, and things like that. And I do appreciate that, but I do have some concerns about the size and the gap with respect to the parking. Not necessarily even the size going back in, because I think you've scaled it down nicely, and I don't really have a problem. This parking is an issue for me.
Okay, we'll hear from Charles Cheatham, and then you can come back to the microphone if you would. if you would. Sir, if you would give us your name and address, and also understand that we've seen your correspondence, just so you're aware.
Yes, I, I'd submit a written protest.
Yes.
My name is Charles Cheatham. I do own three properties that were, are within a three-hundred-foot distance of this, on the north side of Seventeenth Street. I was also on the Neighborhood Board of Directors for twenty-six years. I'm a past president of the neighborhood, and I did participate in every step of the Gatewood UCD ordinance process, which the city adopted in 1987. It's somewhat of a losing point to say the next thing, perhaps, but this property has absolutely nothing to do with the Plaza District. The closest boundary of the Plaza District is more than four blocks west of this property. This property specifically is in the Gatewood neighborhood and in the Gatewood Urban Conservation District, which is the applicable zoning. And there are a number of, of features of the existing zoning, which I think are relevant, and which are not mentioned at all in the Planning Department's staff report. All of the properties in the Gatewood neighborhood, almost twelve-hundred properties, seventy-five blocks, every property in the Gatewood neighborhood is subject to a thirty-five-foot height limit, and this property is too. There are only four buildings in the entire Gatewood UCD district. This is a historic district, four buildings that have three floors. There is nothing in, in the neighborhood that goes anywhere near the fifty-five feet that is being asked here, and nothing that is above three floors. The height limit in the PUD is, is objectionable in itself, because it raises the permissible height limit by twenty feet. That is a major change. This building is massive, but my primary issue is the height. I could almost reconcile myself to three, three floors, which seems to be what most of this is, but I, I cannot see the fourth floor on the east side. I think that's just too, too dangerous as a, as a precedent. In 1987, this neighborhood was under great pressure from commercial redevelopment, and the properties that were bordering those commercial properties were deteriorating. The neighborhood was zoned, even back before 1920, on the Classen side, with C-three and C-four zoning on single lots facing Classen, and next to that, you had residential zoning directly abutting. In some cases, for example, on my block where I live, Nineteenth and Classen, there's a commercially zoned property, the Berry Law Office, which was the old Coast Guard Weather Station. Immediately across the street from it is a historic single-family home. Immediately to the west of it is a historic single-family home. And so we have about four and a half blocks of commercial zoning on Classen. We have about six or seven blocks of commercial zoning on Twenty-third Street, extending from twenty, from Classen West. All of this property more or less backs up directly to residential property. It is a horrible zoning pattern that the city imposed on this neighborhood decades and decades ago. When we went to the city in 1986, really, maybe the end of 1985, we were trying to resolve some problems, and, and the planning staff was very creative in coming up with ways to try to mitigate the impact of the commercial against the residential. The reality is that although the commercial properties were zoned very high, in many cases R4, what was actually built on there was commercial, but was a much lower use. But, but the threat was that because the zoning was so high, and had been there, you know, now ninety years, someone could tear the properties down and build something much more intensive. And so the city imposed a number of restrictions on the C-four and C-three. They couldn't go back and downzone that without a taking of the property and paying people and everything else. But they imposed restrictions. One of the restrictions was a thirty-five-foot height limit on all of these commercial properties around the edge of the neighborhood. And there were other things, like a twenty-five-foot front setback, which by the way, this proposes a zero-front setback, I'm not really stressing that point. Ground signs that couldn't be more than four feet tall with a twenty-four-foot face on them. This, these ground signs are proposed to be twice as tall, and with the surface area four times as large. There were other provisions imposed with regard to screening and landscaping and all sorts of other things, and all of this was designed to kind of control the commercial properties at a certain size or height, and to buffer with the residential properties that are adjoining. The staff report does not even mention that the Gatewood Urban Conservation District ordinance exists. The UCD ordinance clearly states it is an overlay district, and it trumps the R4 zoning on this property. Nobody is saying they have a thirty-five-foot height limit. That really is my major objection. If you go forward with this, the staff is arguing, for example, that, oh, well, it's on, it's a transit corridor, and higher, higher intensity is, is appropriate on a transit corridor. Even a, you know, three-foot height maximum would certainly be more intensity than they have right now. But one of the problems with saying higher intensity on a, on a transit corridor justifies fifty-five-foot building is that every single commercial property in the Gatewood UCD, twelve-hundred properties, the only commercial properties that we have are on transit corridors. Every single property is on Classen Boulevard or on Twenty-third Street, which are both bus lines and transit corridors. And so if you say, we can do this, fifty-five feet on, on this property, then what in the world prevents somebody else from going and trying to rezone any of these other properties to that height? Right now, we have a comprehensive zoning plan that the city put in place to try to protect the historic neighborhood. We have three National Register Historic Districts. We're a state Historic District. If the height limit goes away, then the whole purpose of what the city tried to do in 1987 goes away. There will no longer be a comprehensive plan that basically shields the, the residential properties from too much development too close to them. So unfortunately, I think if you approve this with the fifty-five-foot height limit, the, the Gatewood UCD ordinance controlling all the properties around the edge is just gutted. That's, that's, I think, where we are. That's, that's my major issue. I would just make another comment, as a passing comment, which is a lesser point. There are materials that are permitted for the exterior of this building, and they're listed, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and any one of them can be a hundred percent. According to what they have actually asked for in this zoning proposal, they are permitted to use one-hundred percent cast concrete for this building, if they want. And I, I respect Mr. Wanzner very much, and the developments that he has done that are beautiful, but I don't know why in the world they have to have flexibility to build a one-hundred percent cast concrete building. Why can't they be more specific than that?
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Cheatham? Commissioners?
I feel like maybe I should say that in my past life, I represented the Gatewood Neighborhood Association in the drafting and passage of the UCD. So I can concur with Mr. Cheatham, that all of those things that he has said are true. The, the neighborhood, you know, was very mindful of the protections that it was seeking and receiving through the process of the UCD adoption. And as we've been meeting and talking about the possibility of doing a, like a traditional neighborhoods overlay, one of the things we've talked about is the UCD districts, and, and that as a tool that, that neighborhoods have looked to and used in the past. And I know Commissioner Bright lives in a UCD, so, I mean, I, I do think that that's something that we need to take seriously. And I, I am a little concerned about the, the ways in which this proposal does not meet the requirements of the overlay, the UCD for Gatewood. It's, it's hard to say that this particular corner is any different than most of the rest of the commercial frontage along Classen and Twenty-third, in terms of, you know, the need for intensification of, of use.
Okay, we have someone else who wants to speak. Cheatham, Blair Humphries. Blair, your name and address, please.
Yeah, I live at 1225 Northwest Nineteenth Street. Blair Humphries. And my attorney recommended that it's always a good idea to speak prior to your own item going on the agenda later in the meeting. But since I, I do live in the neighborhood, I live three blocks from the site, and actually, if I were to walk from my house to the site, I would pass a multi-story law building, I would pass a restaurant, a shop, another office building that's, that's far less for the street, and far less for the aesthetic than this. I would pass a three-story apartment building, and then a, a very rundown and worn-out Brahms store sits in the middle of a large and mostly unkept parking lot. I think the UCD district overlay has served a great purpose in Gatewood's history. It's now forty years old. There's been a lot of things that have happened in that forty years that have repositioned the neighborhood. Approximately fifteen years ago is really when the idea of a Plaza District came to be, with the new streetscape, you know, the new Plaza Theater, a series of shops. We really didn't get our first restaurant until about five years ago, and didn't really hit our stride in the Plaza District until more recently. I think that the Plaza District has created such a draw and such a demand, not just for people that, like me, live in a single-family home with a wife and kids and plenty of space. It's also pushed housing prices up in the neighborhood and created an increased demand for rental. And so I think while UCD has served a, a purpose in the past, I think it's very clear that, that it hasn't undergone refinement in that forty years, that Gatewood as a neighborhood has changed, and that there's going to continue to be pressure, really from the community, to see new development occur that perhaps was not specifically in line with what people were thinking in the mid-seventies. A couple of things about the context. That was just my walk I described earlier. Of course, across the street, you have Homeland, you have the American Fidelity Complex, you have Classen Tower, you have the new Sunbeam facility. You could go on and on and talk of buildings that are at this scale or greater, that are adjacent to and hugging that corridor. It's also surrounded by zoning that makes sense, R2, R3, C4, has a range of commercial zoning. This fits right in. I think specifically, it's worth mentioning that they're not asking for blanket zoning, at least as far as I can tell, but they've actually brought their specific site design to you for review. And I think HMM is, is a very qualified firm. In fact, Mosaic, Richard McCown's project in Deep Deuce, won the ULI Impact Award last year for the way that it deals with these issues, with the quality of excellence that I think is really deserving. Some of the things they've done in the site plan, the height limit specifically, it was mentioned that the topography helps to, to mitigate the effect of that height, and I think it's very true. If we were just talking about the height that's occurring along the Classen corridor, there's significant height up and down Classen corridor. I'm much more negatively impacted by the American Fidelity Complex, even though it's across the street, than anyone that's even on an adjacent parcel to this property would ever be impacted by this height. As it comes up and the, the building transitions to the lower, or I think they said thirty-eight feet was the height?
Thirty-four is what I recall, but go ahead.
Okay, it's right in that range. Thirty-four feet is, is right in line with a gabled roof house of two stories and an attic space above. So I don't think that the height is overly offensive. I think they've also done their best to address what is a difficult issue of how do you do appropriate urban infill in what is really an appropriate location on a transit corridor, within walking distance to a mixed-use area, within biking distance to a range of areas, including downtown, midtown, uptown, et cetera. Most of the areas I just mentioned, including Plaza District, I believe, have an overlay that provides for no parking standard associated with the independent users. The fact that they've been able to put that many parking spaces on this project, even though they're operating really without a district that's fighting on their behalf, I think is really impressive. And you can see the way they've done it with their site design, pushing that entrance to the west, making sure they have the double rule of parking provided. That's what drove the entire design of the project. We did a survey, and really, I say "we," it was in partnership with other developers in town, to do, to do a survey of parking use in downtown apartment buildings. Many of the parking facilities in downtown, what they're doing is they're, it's, it's not addressed as a standard by the city, so it's done, left up to the market. They're parking about one car per unit, as far as the space is provided. But what we've seen on those is that even on a, on a hellstorm evening, where you can assume that, that most, if, if not all, of the cars of people that are friends and family and whatever are driving into the facility, we're seeing these things cap out at eighty-five percent occupancy. On a day-to-day basis, we're seeing occupancies in the seventy, sixty-five to seventy percent range. I mean, I, I think that parking could potentially become an issue on this, and I certainly think that there might be merit in saying, how are these on-street spaces gonna play? Because I think those will be important to the retail component. But I don't think that the standard that's on the city's books should ever be the measure of what is optimal in an urban infill situation. I think that really, if a, a developer is willing to take the risk that they might not have a parking space, and that they could suffer in terms of their rents and revenues as a result of that, that should tell you a lot about where things really stand. Because in the case of this particular property with Classen right there, it's not as if they can overflow into the surrounding streets. They've already taken advantage of the on-street parking that's there, and any user without a parking space would be forced to look somewhere far off-site. There are a range of users, I think it's important, one, to point out, that, that residential and retail users tend rarely to overlap in terms of the times that they utilize parking spaces with the highest demand. It's about peak demand measurement, and so there may be some overlap, but when it comes to that peak demand, we would not expect those to occur at the same time, and so there should be a mitigating effect in the shared use of those spaces. Given the fact that they're also surrounded by office users, as well as at Brahms, that is clearly overpart, I have no doubt that if it did become a small issue, it'd be an issue easily resolved through a shared parking agreement or lease of those parking spaces. So as a resident of Gatewood, a former member of the Gatewood Board, a current member of the Plaza District Board, but I guess I'm speaking really just for myself and saying as a resident, I would, I would certainly hope that you would approve this, because I think it's the type of development I hope to see where we're taking the quality of urban infill that's occurring downtown and midtown in Deep Deuce, and allowing it to positively impact the neighborhoods that surround the city's urban core. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I have a comment about what Blair just said. I live in a urban conservation district as well, and we were one of the first, in fact, we were the first, to be designated that, and it has helped prevent encroachment on Twenty-third Street South, which would go into the neighborhood, to stop development, you know, and stop retail development from encroaching. And so I'm a, I'm a big fan of, of the urban conservation district. But when I looked at this application and analyzed kind of what was going on, I shared much, a bit of that concern about parking, but then the comment about what you know about, you know, what, what parking is actually gonna be there at any given time, et cetera. We've dealt with this on certain developments on Western, that, you know, they don't have enough parking, and then the folks in Crown Heights have been concerned about parking on the street, which they do, you know, from time to time. Now, a lot of that's helped have been fixed. But this particular application, and if it is within the Gatewood- But this particular application, and if it is within the Gatewood Urban Conservation District, that's one factor, but I've put this way, way over east from where Gatewood is. I see no impediment whatsoever of the Gatewood neighborhood, I mean, with this taller structure on Classen. I think the project is nicely designed, well-thought-out, and is actually a benefit to the neighborhood irrespective of the fact that there's an overlay that covers this. And so those are my comments. I support it, and I've listened to other people talk about it, but I support this, and I think it's a good addition to that neighborhood. It's a gateway into what's turned out to be, I just drove around it today, and just was, you know, amazed at how much construction's going on, those apartments that we've, you know, that's all going up, and there's another thing going on, and, you know, it's an exciting time for that whole area, and it's about time. So, that's my comment. I think it's a good project, and I am curious, though, about the materials. It's like A, B, C, D, E, F, G, you know, which are you going to do? Are you going to come into, I mean, if you approve, if this is approved, with a specific plan? I mean, are you coming, are we going to know what your materials are that this is going to be built with? Do we know that? Or is it just going to?
It's not a random thing at this point. We are looking at specific materials right now, and it's the material that I'm telling you. So, sort of at the base level, we're looking at a concrete planter.
But we won't know.
It's also kind of what we're showing you in the images as well, which is the architectural metal shake is the material we're interested in pursuing on the project. We haven't completely nailed down the application of that yet. We're still designing a few items on that. There's also, one of the reasons that there's sort of that list of materials, there's also insetts, as you saw in sort of the articulation of the building, there's a series of insetts where we're looking at using additional wood siding on the inside to sort of add warmth to where people are walking. We're looking at the potential of cement board siding, you know, to add color and/or another level of warmth. So there's a series of materials, not just really one monolithic material on the project, but we're trying to be as specific as possible while allowing ourselves the range to keep that design process moving.
Right.
But is our staff report incorrect, Ben, that the way that the PUD is written now, any one of those materials could be 100% of the finish?
It is not incorrect. It was not our intention, I think, for it to read as if any one of these is 100% of the, we're just allowing the materials to be part of the design process.
I'm not sure where that leaves me, because what our staff report says is that any one of these materials can be 100% of the finish, of the wall finish. Page, page am I on here? Four, where the materials are listed. The other thing, and I spoke to Mr. Wanzner about this a little bit, I don't want this conversation to go on for another hour, but, and this may actually be a bigger problem than we can solve today, and I'm willing to acknowledge that. But one of the concerns that I have about these kind of mixed-use development applications is that even though they are presented to us as mixed-use, and I don't have any question in my mind that it's exactly what you're intending to do with the property, and will do with the property if you get your approval. Nonetheless, the way they're drafted, we end up with a list of uses that are allowed for the property, and no way of ensuring, or even of knowing, whether in future, one or two of those uses could end up being the entirety of the development. And I think you probably want to exclude, but the one that jumped out at this to me today was that there's automotive parking lots as a principal use, and I think that's probably something you want to remove. But, so if we pass this today, at some point in the future, it is possible that this entire site will become an automotive parking lot, and that will be permitted under the zoning that it has. Now, it may be that that's just what we're stuck with when we do mixed-use developments, where there are, you know, a handful of uses that are permitted, but I, for one, would be looking at this application very differently if it were an application for an automotive parking lot, or any one of any of the other uses that are allowed. Currently, we don't have any way of knowing that applications that are presented to us as mixed-use applications will, in fact, be developed as mixed-use developments. And that's something I think we, as a planning commission and the staff and maybe legal, need to give some thought to, because I think, for me certainly, and I think probably for most of you, the way we would look at these applications would be very different if it were known to us that it would not be a mixed use, but in fact, would end up being a use, one of those listed as a possibility under the zoning allowed, so.
Well, in my staff report, I struck automotive parking lots as a principal use for the same I think one of the things we can consider is asking for a specific plan when the materials are decided, so that we know what we're going to get when we get it. That doesn't seem to be a burden to me imposed upon you folks. So just come back with what that's going to be when you've, you know, finished your architectural.
Well, why don't we strike the use? We do that all the time. What do you guys need automotive parking lot for? I can't vote for, I won't vote for that if that use is in there. I'm close to not voting for it anyway.
I think we're okay striking that use.
What are you guys talking about here?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're okay with striking that use. This is sort of standard language, and I totally agree with you.
But just for the point that I was making, I wouldn't feel any differently about the fact that it also includes drinking establishments sit-down alcohol permitted. So, you know, I would be looking at this application, or any application, very differently if what I thought I was looking at on this corner is a bar.
Well.
Period. And not a bar as part of a mixed use, right?
I basically like the idea of redeveloping this corner and doing it well, and I think that's essentially what the applicants propose. I don't want to negotiate it further from the horseshoe today. One thing I would suggest, in terms of how we address the mixed-use question you raise, is we might say that there will be office, commercial, and so forth facing Classen, at least on the first floor, and looping around the corner onto 16th. I mean, some things like that, that could be worked out in a couple of weeks and come back to us, and we would have something that I think maybe would pass. I'm concerned today that there are enough questions being raised that you might have a problem.
Well, I do have concern. I mean, look, I know that the application said to the protesters points with respect about the staff report and its lack of detail as to how this application does not, does comply, or does not comply with the UDC. It's like, he's right in his assessment of the staff report. It didn't give me enough color to understand what that was, and that's clearly something that was important at one time. It was important enough for us to do it. It's still there. We ought to know how we're at variance with this. Usually, Mr. Groves would point out things like that to us in his efforts, which I appreciate. But we didn't get enough detail from our own staff on this one, if that's part of it. And I appreciate that gentleman bringing that up. But, and I'm going to make one final comment about parking. If you go down to 50% of 77, that's still 38 spots. They're a long way from being in compliance. And you look at that, and that's off-street residential parking, back over on Klein, right up there. I went to 60, 70, you're not close. So, for me, that's, I mean, I know it's, it just doesn't make it. I think we got to be concerned about putting half parking in that area. Not 80%, but half. That's all I got. I can't support the application as it currently sits.
This is Jonathan Dodson, and I live at 1220 Northwest 20th Street, and I'm one of the partners on this project. And just to be clear, it wasn't 38 that we were talking about. We have, I think, 48 spots. So, it's more than 50%. And then, I would just also add that we have had the tension of, do we take landscaping out to add additional spots? So there is, we could take out all the trees, and we can get 56 spots in. We felt like, after doing parking studies, and, you know, I live four blocks from this site, so we spent the last two months visiting every neighborhood association, so we visited with Gatewood twice, we visited with Plaza twice, we visited with Tin Pin twice, any neighborhood that we felt might be impacted by this. We went and met with them multiple times to actually hear them out, ask questions, show them our design, before we showed them to anyone else. So, we have worked very hard to try to make sure that we're not negatively impacting an area that I care about. I ride my bike with my kids down to that Brahms almost every week, so it's important to me. But secondly, I think we also have to start thinking about what makes Plaza so unique and so great, and that's because it's so walkable. And so many of the people that want to be down there, they work in midtown, they work in downtown, and they want to ride their bikes, and they know that Classen is going to be a transit hub, a long-term with Bus Rapid Transit and many of these other things that are being proposed. And so, to hit almost 50 spots, 48 spots with parking, we've also been talking with Brahms about leasing some of their lots if we feel like we have an issue. There's also an office on the south side of 16th that we've talked to. So, we are very much willing to go ahead and, if our studies are wrong, if history's wrong, and we need to go out in parking, we're willing to do that. But we feel like we have adequately met what needs to happen at this point.
Well, again, I get your, thank you for that, but once it sails past us, there's no incentive for anybody to take remedial measures at a later time. I get it, I'm approved. You guys said it was good.
There is, there is. If we don't have enough parking, then people aren't going to live there. So, there's a very real market condition related to what we're trying to do. So, and that is a very serious impact for us.
Anyone else discussion, commissioners?
Are we continuing this? Or are we voting?
I'm not sure where the head count is, and I think it could be a risk.
I mean, it's their application.
You can ask us to vote. I mean, we'll do that if you want us to.
If I heard correctly, Commissioner Yocel, you were talking specifically, potentially about understanding a better use of the materials as, and understanding exactly what you're approving. We are still working through some budget issues, which is why we're trying to have some malleability in that. So, we are closed. What we've presented is what we are wanting to build, but we are still working through some budgeting issues. The timing of trying to get the PUD approved as a linear process of the project is important today, but if there's hesitation, and we need to come back in two weeks with a more definitive material palette and percentages, I...
It's not ready.
Yeah.
Well, a specific plan would just be a TE, that you would come back with that when you made a decision.
Oh, sure, okay, yeah, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think we're...
Not another application or anything?
No, I think we're fine with that kind of TE added to it. Yeah, we'd be happy to come back and show that to you.
Okay.
Without a doubt. Thank you.
Any other discussion, commissioners?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Mike, we had talked a little bit about staff and making sure that, you know, the Greenwood design plan fit, you know, what might affect this project, because we didn't really get that in our report.
We don't have that information. In fact, parking doesn't come up at all in that report.
I just want to speak to that really quick. When we have a rezoning application from one zoning district to another zoning district, the staff report typically doesn't include all the provisions of the zoning district you're asking to rezone from.
Right.
It's just reviewing what they're asking to rezone to. So, in this case, there's a UCD overlay that has specific provisions that it's not meeting. And so what we could do is find a place on the staff report, I'm not sure where that would be, to compare the difference between the zoning districts they're coming from to what they're going to. There's just not a section for us to highlight that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But when we do overlays, I mean, there's a reason why we impose them, so it seems to me like it would be worthwhile to know that.
Yeah, there's a distinction here between saying we want to go from C3 to PUD mixed use.
Right.
I mean, we know what C3 means, we know what the PUD proposal is, but as you're saying, if there's some sort of an overlay, we don't know what those provisions are that will also be lifted if we approve this. So that's, somehow, we want to have that context, I think, is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Some of this is beyond what we're talking about today, I think, as far as what's in the evaluation and such, but...
Well, the commission would like to know what the conservation district provisions might be that we've not been made aware of. And we're talking about November 10th is our next meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when is it?
November 10th.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're happy to...
I think we're, I mean, the commission wants that conservation district piece that they don't have.
That's something we can look into, and I'm assuming staff can look into as well, and we'll do it from the architectural team side of things, too, so.
So... We defer this for two weeks, is that what we're... Or to November 10th, our next meeting, and add a TE that we'll ask for a specific plan when the materials are determined. And parking? And that's going to be one of the things that'll be addressed, I think. Parking will be, at least, discussed again or revisited.
Okay, so is that a motion, continue to November 10th?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue. Item 10 to November 10th, cast your votes, and we'll see...
See you in a couple of weeks. Thank you all for your input and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is C 6831, the final plat of Wheeler District, phase one.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who you've already been acquainted with, Mr. Blair Humphries. Today, this is the final plat. It does conform to the preliminary plat. There are a handful of TEs, all of which we are in agreement with, and we are continuing to work with staff on a few issues to work out, and we're excited that this is to the stage where we now have a final plat, and hopefully, we'll be proceeding to see this realized very soon. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but ask for your approval.
Now, we're going to sign up, commissioners. No approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes. Thank you.
Item 12 is PUD 1623 to rezone 12231 North Erduke Depot Boulevard from double A to PUD 1623.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. The owners, developers are here today if we have any questions for them in the future. You have seen this before you twice at this point, and we're back, and I won't go over everything, but some of you weren't here before, so I'll kind of give you a little bit of a history. 10 acres, corner of southeast 122nd and Erduke Depot. About half of it is in what they call Corvus Engineers Flow Asemen. It's below the 1033 elevation line, which means if Lake Arcadia fills up completely, that's where the water will go to. So what we are trying to do is develop this for residential project with, and maintain that common area as an environmentally sensitive area. I have, and it was brought up last meeting, about that we didn't have a conservation plan or a statement, and so I had the guys that, the developers, who are also talking about building their houses out there, come up with a draft of what they had in mind to do. So in that five acres, the draft, I'll pass it out. But in the bottom paragraph, I'll start it, just want to have it this way, it talks about hill treatment, that area, it's going to be brush, and clear out those kind of things in the future. But the subject, Brian, I have...
Brian, go to the microphones, because the public misses you.
I understand, I'm sorry. The other area that I gave you, I think is in your packet also, but I wanted to just mention on that area, that the areas, we talked about us setting a precedent by going to one-acre lots. And I did bring this up last time on your area that you do have there. To the north of this project, there's a street called... To the north of this project, there's a street called Hunter's, Hunter Drive, that's seven acres, a little over seven acres and seven lots. That would equate to about an acre lot. Country Road, which is on that area also, has just, just a little bit above one-acre lots. To this, immediately to the east, Shadow Ridge subdivision, 157 acres with 122 lots. So a little above one-acre lots. So we're really not setting a precedent by going with the smaller lots. One of these things that you saw last time was that the protester, Mr. Groves, did bring in some alternates to our plan. One of them was a two-lot subdivision, keeping the, keeping the environmentally sensitive area alive. Then it went to a three-lot option that would keep the environmentally sensitive area alive. We have since come up with a four-lot option, which keeps the environmentally, that's hard to say too many times, the ESA area open or available, which would allow for four one-acre lots. It would still have the street coming in off of North Air Depot. One of the things that the, Mr. Groves' plans that he presented to you before had the entrance coming off northeast 122nd. We cannot come in off of northwest 122nd, the, we have no site distance. That drops from about, a little bit further to the west of our proper line, there's a pipeline. From that pipeline down to where that pond is, is about a 25 to 30-foot drop. It's very steep, we would not be able to put a driveway or an entrance there. So our entrance has to be on North Air Depot. One of the things that I think too is that Thomas Jefferson wrote a by his own Bible a long time ago, I wouldn't lie back then, but he took the parts that he just wanted out of the Bible and made that his Bible. In this case, the staff report talks about the policies that are in the master plan, and you can't just take the ones you want. You have to take them all. And on page nine, I think I want to retalk, I want to talk about this a little bit, because it was kind of just passed over last time. The staff report, and on page nine, it says that RM, Real Medium Land Topology recommends minimum lot size of two acres, with a decrease to one acre if the preservation of an environmentally sensitive area is included. I think that's important. I think our plan is a responsible plan that keeps that there. Okay, you go on down to part two and talks about compatibility. And I know this is a big deal too to everybody. It talks about having adjoining lots be at least forty percent of the size of the lots next door. Next door are five-acre lots, and forty percent of that is two-acre lots. Now, our four-acre layout, I've taken our four-acre layout, and some of you have seen it. I can take the four-acre layout and I can make those all, or if I could take five, actually make two-acre lots if we want to go with that point. But the environmentally sensitive area then becomes private property. Someone could go in there and do what they want.
Now, if you have restrictions in the SPUD or whatever that would require them to maintain it as would otherwise be required of a common area?
If you did, and that's, and again, you can have this, or do we get this? And what I think we have is an area, here's my four-lot layout, keeps this environmentally sensitive area alive, four one-acre lots, they enter over here off of Air Depot. If we get less than four lots, all of a sudden, it's not, it can't, we cannot build a public street anymore, because that's a very expensive item to build. So we're talking about driveways. If I, if you don't like that idea, then we go with still a four-home subdivision, but we, everybody owns their two-and-a-half acres, or two acres. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like a smorgasbord today. Do you want to keep that as a common area and allow four homes? Or do we just do what the staff report says of, you know what, we're going to go with two-acre lots, it matches the comprehensive plan? We're not going to go out there and just remove all the trees. We know that's not going to happen. The trees are a huge amenity to people. But we're trying to protect them, and you see his draft, of what he's written, of what he wants to do with that area. So it's kind of a, you guys do get to pick which way you'd like to go, I think, today. We're okay with the four, they're okay, we're okay with three, they didn't like the idea of four. But again, I think that we could come back and match the comprehensive plan and say, you know what, let's just go with four, two-and-a-half acre lots. They each have their own driveway, if that's what they want. I don't think that's a responsible way to develop this property. I think this way protects that five-acre common area, protects the trees, and it can be part of the PUD, there's no doubt. But if we go away from this, then all of a sudden, environmentally sensitive area may not be protected as well.
Mr. Coons, I need to see that.
Okay.
I couldn't see it the way you were holding it. And Brian, with your four-acre proposal, the setback issues you raised, and front and side and so forth, just go away.
Well, we'd still like to have the flexibility. If there's a lot of large trees on one side of the lot, we sure don't have to move our house to match that. I understand the setback because of the aerobic thing, and I'm okay with that. I don't want an aerobic within 25 feet, someone else's aerobic system within 25 feet of my house. We can adjust those if we need to. You know, with, if we do the four-lot layout with no...
But you don't need the five-foot sideline setbacks and the kinds of things you were talking about?
No.
That was my question.
So I think the question is, do we want to keep that common area or do we not?
I think we need to hear from Mr. Groves.
Okay.
Mr. Coons, just before you, just before you leave, I want to make sure that we understand what in fact you're saying on this particular drawing.
Okay.
Is that you would add this property?
Yes. And what I would do if I had that, then that road would become a private road, and it would be in an easement across those four lots. But we would meet the staff report comment of all the lots would be two acres or above. But each homeowner would own his portion of that, of the yellow. So what my one-acre layout, which is the green, would protect that, where all the homeowners could watch over each other and say, no one gets to go in there and remove any trees. So I think it's a responsible plan to try to protect that yellow area that's on that drawing.
Now, if you extend the ownership across that area, explain to me why restrictions cannot be imposed on the homeowners to leave it or to maintain it as if it was a common area?
You could do, you could put some restrictions on there in your homeowner's documents. Yes, you could.
I mean, we could impose it here.
Yes, you could. Yes, you could. Which is fine with us too. And maybe that's a win-win.
I mean, that saves the track that we're trying to save if that's...
Maybe that's, maybe that's a win.
That is the primary goal.
That's a win.
I think, Mr. Chairman, this is the equivalent of a conservation easement.
Yeah.
That it would be a deed restriction easement that is a conservation easement, that that's never to be developed.
Yeah.
And it's never to have the trees moved.
I mean, the developer's okay with that.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be exactly as it is, except the ownership is with the property owner.
Yes.
And that's their property, and therefore you meet the two-acre limitation.
Exactly.
Except that half of their stuff is under a conservation easement perpetual, forever.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good idea. I like that.
Let's hear from Mr. Groves.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Eric Groves. I'm an attorney. I represent Charles Weddington, who speaks on behalf of the neighbors in this area. I'm also, he is here today, also accompanied by Catherine Maxon of Rob Elliott and Associates Architects, who have helped us with preparing drawings and alternative proposals for this land. I want to start off by saying that you deferred this matter before so that Brian and I could talk, and we did. By the way, we're handing out some exhibits to you. Some have numbers, some don't, because we got them at the last minute, and I'll review them with you just shortly, but well, she's distributing those. I want the commission to know that up until this very moment, I have never heard a word about a four-lot option. This is news to me. I have never heard a word from Mr. Coon about how the upland's forest, which is on the flowage easement, the core's flowing easement, how that's going to be handled. And I'll address it during this, but I want you to know that I am surprised by what Mr. Coon said. He supplied me with none of this information until this moment. So let's go back to the beginning. We have some blowups that we'll use in just a moment. This case is actually more a law case than it is a fact case. This case is about the comprehensive plan. And in a minute, we're going to deal with the plating of this property, and that's about the subdivision regulations. There's not a lot of dispute about what's on the land. I do want to point out, in response to Mr. Coon's remarks, that I don't know much about what's north of 122nd Street, but I do know that my client's land is to the west and the south of the subject property. And those are five-acre lots, the west and the south. There's no dispute about that. And those lots are adjacent to the subject property. Adjacent means right next door. Shadow Ridge is not adjacent, it's across Air Depot to the east, and Shadow Ridge does have one-acre lots. Despite that fact, the residents of Shadow Ridge are unanimously opposed to this proposal. And they have their reasons, even though they're not directly adjacent. And one, of course, is they do not want that environmentally sensitive area to be destroyed. And we can talk about that in a moment. But in any event, to go back to the beginning, and I discussed some of this in my letter brief to you all, put in your packets. But when a case like this comes along, what does the staff do? Well, it engages in an evaluation process, and you can find that process at page 69 of the comprehensive plan. The first step in the evaluation process is to determine the gross compatibility using the land use compatibility matrix. And when that is done, one can see whether there is incompatibility, which there is here. The lots that Brian proposes, if there's five of them, they're going to be less than an acre each next to five-acre lots, so there's incompatibility. The next step is to see if there's the potential for making it compatible. The comprehensive plan has mitigation measures that are available to bring about compatibility where it might not otherwise exist. And the way that's done is the application of the forty percent rule, or the sixty percent, forty percent rule, whatever. The commission is aware of this rule. This commission inspired that rule. And what it states is that residential lots, less than forty percent of adjacent residential lots are not permitted. They must be at least forty percent. Now, under the two-acre lot proposal that we showed the commission previously and have here again today, two-acre lots equals forty percent of five-acre lots. So that's compatible. And that mitigates the incompatibility. A lot of what our new plan is about is trying to mitigate incompatibility by adjusting things. And one way to adjust them is to say your lots cannot be greater or smaller rather than forty percent. So the forty percent rule is in the plan, and it's clear. It's not ambiguous. And I think we attached copies of the plan to my letter brief, in case anybody wanted to look at them easily. The comp plan at page, at the staff report, having gone through this exercise, at page nine, says this. Comprehensive plan recommends lot sizes forty percent to mitigate the impact of new smaller lots. The staff is repeating what the comprehensive plan says. The staff then says two-acre lots would be compatible. Less than one-acre lots would not be compatible. Then at page 10 of the staff report, the staff discusses conditions to achieve conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff said two things. Lot size should be two acres, and there should be a plan to preserve the trees. And we concur with the staff. Now, one of the exhibits I gave you is an exchange of emails between my client, Mr. Weddington, and Lance Groves. My client was trying to get a better understanding of how the process works. I think I marked it Exhibit 1. And I want to quote something that Lance said. Of course, a lot of this is in the staff plan, in the staff report, but Lance added something here that I think is important. I don't think there's any doubt, but this is an ESA, an environmentally sensitive area. I don't think that can be disputed. It can't be developed, can't be built on. The Corps has a flowage easement over it. And one of the reasons it's an ESA is an upland forest. And here's what Lance said. He said, "The first step in looking at this is determine if an environmentally sensitive area exists on the proposed development site." And Lance says, "Well, the answer to that's yes." Not only that, it occupies 5.75 acres of this site. And then he says, "The next step is to assess any potential impacts the proposed development may have on environmental attributes." Well, that has not been done. It is not sufficient for Mr. Coon to tell you that we're just not going to go out there and start cutting down trees. That is not a plan. We would be interested in hearing from the applicant if they really do have a plan. Because this area, this upland forest, is an attribute to this neighborhood. There is a way to do this, but I haven't heard it, and lots of what he said that I had never heard before. But let's just suppose, oh, by the way, here's the third step that Lance said, and this is from the plan. Customize the design and engineering of the development to include appropriate preservation and restoration methods as to the ESA. Well, that can be done, but it hasn't been done. There's not a word in the PUD design statement about the preservation of this ESA. Nothing, nothing in writing, nothing that you can approve or disapprove. Now, I can tell you how it can be done. Since the land cannot be developed, and nothing can be done to cross the flowage easement without a 404 permit from the Corps, what if the developer were to say, "I'm going to donate this land to a nature conservancy organization of some kind if they'd be willing to accept it, and they can keep it up, can maintain the trees and preserve the critters that live there." The easement idea that Commissioner Bright mentions, a possibility too. But an easement has to run in favor of somebody. And we'd be interested in talking about an easement if it were enforceable by the people who have an interest in the preservation of this ESA. But certainly, nothing has been said, done, or submitted that you can approve today, I don't think, if you agree that this ESA should be preserved. There's a lot of ways to do it. The easiest way is to put it in the hands of somebody who agrees to maintain it. Now, I don't know whether such an organization exists, because it costs money to maintain trees and critters, but that's one way. An easement might be another way. Now, there was talk about, and there often is, there's going to be an HOA that would have the responsibility for maintaining this as a common area. We see that all the time in PUDs, but is that enforceable? Does the developer actually go out, pay a lawyer like me, to draft covenants that run with the land, that mandate the creation of an HOA? The answer is no, it doesn't happen all that often. It can be done, I do it. And then the HOA has the duty to maintain the common area, and it has the power of assessment. Now, sometimes those work and sometimes they don't, as the commission knows. But be it an easement, be it an HOA, be it a donation to a nature conservancy organization, we don't know. And I respectfully suggest that the commission should not approve an application with that degree of uncertainty. Now, a few more words about comprehensive planning and the importance of it. I think you're all familiar with the statute that commands you to do a comprehensive plan. It's Title 11, Section 47-106, and here's what it says. "It shall be the function and duty of the commission to make and adopt a master plan for the physical development of the municipality." And that has been done. And its most recent iteration is quite a piece of work. The importance of the plan, I think, was reflected in an interesting case I gave you, a copy of it called Town of Dixon. a copy of it called Town of Dixon. Funny thing happened in the Town of Dixon some years ago. They decided they didn't want any honky-tonks. So they passed some ordinances that said, "No honky-tonks in Dixon." Well, the honky-tonk people appealed that, wound up the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals said, "Well, we're not going to decide whether you can ban honky-tonks or not, but we're going to tell you one thing, you can't zone without a comprehensive plan." That's what they said to the Town of Dixon. If you want to zone out honky-tonks, give it a try, but you've got to have a comprehensive plan. The very basis for zoning in this jurisdiction is the existence of a comprehensive plan. That's how important it is. Is it law? No. It's not a statute, it's not an ordinance, but it exists because the statute commands it to exist. Although it's not a law, if provisions in the plan make sense, a deviation from it could be an abuse of discretion or arbitrary. Now, why should this Planning Commission insist on conformance with the plan? For the sake of predictability and precedent. People make land use decisions, they buy homes, on the basis that there's some degree of predictability about what's going to happen around them. If this were to be adopted, regardless of what the applicant might say, it will set a bad precedent. It will set a precedent for the land to the west and to the south. The next guy who comes along can say, "Well, there's three-quarter acre lots next door to these five-acre lots, why can't I have the same?" There's also an investment factor here of the citizens. The comprehensive planning process just doesn't involve staff in this Commission. It involves citizens who are invited to meetings because they believe that what they have to say will be incorporated into the plan and make some difference in how their community is developed. If the corporation deviates from that plan, the citizens' confidence in it can be eroded. And the last thing we need in this community or elsewhere is an erosion of communal faith. We've got to believe in each other, and we've got to believe that the government is representative of us and that the government listens to us. The third thing is public policy. And what that means is if the statutes authorize and command comprehensive planning, and the courts uphold it as a precedent to zoning, it seems to me it's something to be taken seriously. And that's all I'm asking you to do. Just comply with the plan. I don't always agree with the staff, but they're right this time. All you have to do is look at the plan, go through the process in the plan, the conclusion is inescapable. You can't have five, or less than one-acre lots next to five-acre lots. It can't be done under the plan. So, that's my pitch. We're going to object to the preliminary plat when we get to it, but for right now, I want to ask you to deny this. That's not to say we're not willing to talk, but we have talked. You know, now, I haven't heard what, you know, Brian had to say today, but we're willing to talk about what happens to that upland forest. That's important. You know, we could make a deal where there's a trade-out, the preservation of that forest. It's important to the people who live around there. But as things stand now, we stand by the plan. We object, we ask you to turn it down. Thank you. Any questions?
I do. Eric?
Sir?
It was based upon what we've been told today, which isn't in the application. If I understand what Brian is suggesting, is that there is going to be a deed issued to each of these four owners, that that deed will encompass more than two acres each.
I don't get it.
And half of the, half of the property that is going to be deeded will be under a conservation easement or something like that. Therefore, they're not going to build there, but they own more than two acres, which complies with RA.
Oh, I mean, the, the two acres would be comprised of part of the ESA.
There'd be a two-acre conveyance, or whatever it is, four divided by, or, four divided by 10.
Well, that won't work.
All right.
Well, because what I think you're talking about is you take the lots and extend them into the flow easement?
Yeah, I mean, they, they own the whole thing.
So then, the preservation of that forest, first of all, the responsibility split up among, let's say, four owners?
Perpetual conservation easement, that we, it could never be developed or have anything built on it for as long as people are around.
And each owner would then have the responsibility to preserve his section of?
It's their land.
Yeah, well, and, and the easement would contain provisions that, that impose a duty.
I'm just saying that this, this isn't in the application. Nothing that I'm saying is in here. But when we got this map, and you're going to have a deed executed by the property owner now to the new property owner, each one of those four deeds are going to encompass more than two acres. Who's the easement in favor of?
The question.
The world.
And that's the question, you see. Who could enforce the easement? You and I are both lawyers, that's the, yeah, who's going to enforce the easement?
The, the, the issue of conservation easements have been researched and done, I mean, with what my wife's been involved with, with a certain conservation trust. The perpetual conservation easement is filed of record, it's in the, it's in the county clerk's office, and anybody that goes in there to do anything, that comes out. It's right there, and it will, and it's a perpetual conservation easement, that nothing can ever happen on that piece of land.
I like that part of it's enforceable. If my guy or his successor interests.
Well, I would suggest that.
Has the right to enforce it.
Come from your, from your clients who are objecting to a development of that, I mean, the whole, that whole group of people.
Yes.
That are protesting this would say, "Whoa, wait a minute, there's a, there's an easement on there that perpetually protects that whole wooded area."
I think these things about it. I think that if it's enforceable, it might work.
Yeah.
But I can see difficulties as enforcing it because you've got four responsible parties, each responsible for a different piece of property. And, I mean, I, I don't know what Connie's been doing with, I mean, I'd, I'd like to hear about it. I, I don't know much about them, but, you know, it would have to be enforceable, it would have to be perpetual.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And it would have to have standards of conservation and maintenance. I would say this, the easier way to do it, where you don't have the responsibility divided up among four lot owners, is to give it to somebody who's in the business of maintaining parks.
A trust.
Yes.
Conservation trust, or something, nature conservancy, or something like that.
Yes.
It could be, that easement could be granted to one of those entities.
Yes.
But, but my point is, and I don't think that we should be voting on something that's not here yet, Brian, we, it's, you know, but my point is, if these issues are researched and the terms of the trust and the conservation easement are determined, you, you then have a deed for more than two acres, that half of it's going to be protected perpetually, and the wooded area's going to be there, therefore, not setting a precedent that you're talking about, which I fully agree, preserve the Comprehensive Plan and don't screw around with it at all, but you haven't. You've got two acre, two acre, two acre, two acre, with the preservation of the woods there. And what I'd like to see is that being brought back to us with the terms and the definitions of what you're going to do.
It's a very interesting concept, I must say, very inventive. Sure, we'd be interested in talking about it.
Okay.
Subject to the things I mentioned, enforceability.
But I'm not willing to vote on something that we don't have.
Well, Bob, you've gone right where I was going to go, which is.
What?
You've gone right where I was going to go.
Oh.
I'd like to ask Susan a couple of questions, and as, listening to the back and forth here. Are there some practical ways that we can deal with this? Do you have to look into it? I mean, what, what's your guidance to the Commission?
Before we do, we do anything like that, I would want to research on the easement issue. And I'm not sure why you couldn't do, put the language in the PUD on the preservation, as the staff report has pointed out, and have language in the PUD that you would preserve the trees, or something like that, but.
Well, that, I don't think that'll work.
That wouldn't be work because it's a.
That leaves it to us to enforce. The city, the city, Susan, the city's not proactive.
One-acre lot, and that's, that's the precedent that we don't want anybody else pointing back to.
The city has never been proactive in enforcing covenants. It doesn't want that job, and it's never done.
Well, it wouldn't be a covenant, I'm saying it'd be in the PUD itself.
Well, that's a zoning ordinance. We, we couldn't agree to that. Zoning ordinance can be changed any time. Covenants run with the land, they're forever.
I'm not going to get in any cabinets, I'm not saying that we would be negotiating cabinets.
When I say covenants, I include easements. They run with the land, and they're enforceable by parties other than the city. I wouldn't want to impose that burden on the city, the city's never wanted it. I think it has to be left up to private parties, don't you?
Absolutely.
Are there any conservation standards on the current owner of the property? Or is it just sitting out there, growing, and with critters crawling all over it? Is that what's going on now? Okay.
There are some things in the plan, Commissioner, about the direction that the conservation should take. There's like a five-step plan or something, but it's not as specific as I wish it was. But as things stand now, we have nothing, you know, we have no plan at all.
Janice?
Stop me anytime, but I, I, this all sounds way more complicated than it needs to be. I think that if you look at the staff report itself, it indicates that what is being proposed as five lots would in fact meet the requirements of the Comprehensive Plan, because it also provides for the protection of this environmentally sensitive area, and therefore, the reduction in size is appropriate. It also says that there should be language incorporated into the PUD, and this looks like a good start to me, to ensure that that, that the environmentally sensitive area is preserved. I, I think that's a great idea. To me, the flexibility that is provided by developing 10 acres, five lots, as an average of two acres, is sufficient to meet the requirements of the plan, gets us the benefit of preserving the area, the language can be included that will, I mean, we do this all the time, PUDs, I don't understand why this is complicated. I think that we should vote on it just like it is, and I, for one, would support that. Nobody else has anything else they want to say? In fact, I'll move approval.
That's not what the staff report says. It says.
How I read it.
Minimum lot size should be two acres. Doesn't say five one-acre lots.
May I comment?
Sure.
She said I could stop her whenever I wanted to.
Yeah. And we'll do that with you, too.
I don't want to stop you. You know, if you go to the staff report, go to the TEs, there's four TEs, I can agree with all four of them, with the suggestions that I got today and the drawing I gave you. We mentioned the four lot thing the other day, and that was not heard, but, and it wasn't discussed, but it was mentioned. The four lot deal that you'll see, we can make that happen, we can agree with all these TEs, we, that way, we will comply with the, with the Comprehensive Plan. And I think what we could do, and we'll continue to work with them, we've been continued twice. What we'd like to say is that we will get with them, and Eric and I have always worked things out, we always have. We still have to come back with the final plat. We can have language on the final plat that tells what's going to happen with that area. I think, again, we can agree with these TEs, and TE4 says the PUD, PUD should include language regarding preservation of trees. I presented that today, we can fine-tune it before we get to council. It meets the Comprehensive Plan, so you're not setting a precedent that he's saying, "Hey, there's quarter-acre lots over there, three-quarter." It meets that. And again, you're going to have a final plat that's going to be recorded at that courthouse that can have that conservation easement on it, and it'll give us time to work out, what do you want to see in there? We've put, no trees will be removed, that's pretty strict. Whether it's an easement, or whether it's a common area or not, you still, someone's going to have to enforce it, and that's going to be the neighbors. I don't think they want us enforcing things on his property, so he doesn't want to have to enforce stuff on our property, but it'd be up to those four owners. It's their benefit to protect it. So, we will have language on that final plat, but I can agree with all the TEs today with that new plan, and we'd like to move forward because you're going to see this again with the final plat. And the preliminary plat, we can revise the preliminary plat from here and just say we're going to have four lots instead of five. And then we can move forward.
It agrees with all the TEs.
Yeah, one of them says.
I've already moved approval.
Well, one of them says, uh, two-acre lots.
It does, that's right.
And it's, he, he's agreeing to two-acre lots.
Yeah.
Well, how come he's got a plat with five acre, for five lots? Can't agree to the TEs as they stand now?
Oh.
And, and if we made a deal, what would the terms and conditions of it be?
Well, and I may say so, we change things, you change things all the time from up here, and so do we. So what we're saying is we'll take it to four lots instead of five. Four lots. I mean, if we had to have everything done, you all wouldn't be able to change our deal, and we can't change it either. We changed it from the floor today, and I think it's been a pretty good compromise.
So the TE reads, "Four lots with a minimum lot size of two acres."
Yes. And we, we modify TEs all the time from the floor also, and you all do, too. So I understand what he's saying, but I don't want to continue. How long are we going to drag this out, when I think it's a win to get two-acre lots?
It could be, but it's not before the Commission.
It is before the Commission.
It is not before the Commission. The Commission has nothing in writing, this is not part of the application. It's just, you know, on, on, on the fly. You know, we're willing to look at things so long as it's in writing and so long as it's enforceable. But this is just stuff that's been presented orally to the Commission, has no force or effect. You know, we're not unreasonable.
He does.
We just put it in the motion. Pat, comment?
I, I would not approve this, this one. I'd like for it to continue two weeks until they can give some kind of agreement on the wording of the easement.
Yes, have a conflict on the first Thursday, or second Thursday in November, and a continuance would be good if we're going to talk about the terms and conditions of these easements that you were talking about. But I, I can't, I can't make that second Thursday.
Due respect to Commissioner Ryan, I don't think I can devote another minute of my life to this application.
Well.
My time is valuable as everybody else's is, so I, I move, or Janice has moved, excuse me, approval, but do you want to amend that TE to four lots with a minimum lot size of two acres?
If that's agreeable.
It is.
If that's agreeable to the applicant, I will. So, man.
Second motion.
But we've not answered the question yet, in my opinion anyway, of how the easement's going to be written and who's going to enforce it. Because I've seen enough of these.
I don't know that if I have. Look, if I have four lots at minimum lot size of two acres, am I in compliance with the plan? Then.
But you have dealt with the.
That's where I am.
Environmental sensitive area.
I mean, if it meets the plan.
We need to talk about the further.
What is the speech of the preservation of trees?
And one of the TEs calls for the preservation of trees. I, I mean, I'm, I get your point, Eric, but as a Commission, I'm, I don't want to step outside where I, where I ought to be. And like I said, we need to move this one on. So that's the motion I seconded, or Lee seconded.
And we don't. If your path's concerned, we don't know how this is going to be managed, and that is an issue for me.
And I might just second, too, that when we write in language in PUDs about preservation of trees, it does become a legal requirement, it is a zoning thing, it's written into the zoning. So it can be enforced, but it becomes a zoning enforcement issue.
So can, can, at, at.
Let's vote.
When they come back, will they have to add in the language, be more specific about what that preservation plan looks like? That can be a TE if somebody wants it to be a TE and wants to.
I will commit to you that that will be on the final plat. And then it's not only a zoning issue, it's recorded at that courthouse over there.
But who enforces it at that point?
The, the owners of the property, those four owners.
Association, association with this?
Um, I'm not sure, but it'd be the four owners, it'd be like a covenant that, I mean, it, it's like any common area, who maintains it, and if they don't, they've got to, they've got to enforce it themselves on each other.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't give him the permission to enforce it, or the neighbor, it's going to be up to the people that own pretty nice, pretty nice properties, are going to want to protect their homes.
It'll be a common area with different kinds of restrictions than would typically occur because you're in that flowway.
Yes, yes.
And you're required to maintain the trees, so that's going to have to be incorporated as part of.
It won't be a common area, it'll be a conservation easement on the plat, and I will put the language in there on that plat. So it'll be recorded, zoning, it'll be in your PUD, it'll be on the. So it'll be recorded, zoning, it'll be in your PUD, it'll be on the final plat at that courthouse.
We'd be glad to consider it when we see a draft of the final plat.
Add that as a TE?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
But...
So, will you amend your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we now have a motion to approve item 12, incorporating a TE with a specific description of the maintenance of the common area and amending the other TE to four lots from two with a minimum lot size of two acres. And lot size is a minimum of two acres.
But not a common area. The conservation easement.
Conservation easement.
Okay.
Let's vote.
That's now the motion. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Thank you.
One other thing along that line, that property has some sentimental value, or you know that or not, but years ago, that used to be called a hanging tree, and it used to be where a lot of teenagers used to go and turn their car lights on this big slab and go out and dance.
You just heard, had you heard that story?
Those, those were the days.
Item, excuse me, item 13 is C 6844. This is to the accompanying preliminary plat for Oakdale Woods.
O'Brien, you want to amend the TEs for us?
I don't think I have to.
Oh, no, you probably don't.
I think we're okay. The, uh, the limits on number five, the limits of no access, of course, we've got to have some access somewhere to the section line, so that would be through our public street. So, but other than that, we'd be glad to, I mean, I agree with the TEs.
We may need to amend two.
With the amendment, uh, there's going to be four lots instead of five.
Four lots, minimum lot sizes of two acres.
Yes. And I think that may be...
Lee?
I need to put my objection on the record. We object to the approval of the preliminary plat. We ask that it be denied based on the subdivision regs, which say that the plat must conform with the comprehensive plan. It does not, therefore the preliminary plat should not be approved. Secondly, for the record, I incorporate in my presentation today, objecting to the preliminary plat, all of the remarks and exhibits from the hearing on the PUD, incorporate them by reference. I also incorporate by reference all of the things I said and all of the exhibits we offered in the last hearing on this matter, so that the record is clear.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Amending TE two to...
Move what?
Four lots with minimum two lots. It's TE two with the amendment.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is PUD 1624 to rezon 1602 Highland Park Boulevard.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Cockmore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. I'll let Ms. Powers step out.
Bye, Janice.
We are here after our continuance. If you'll recall, at the last hearing, it was objected to by Mr. Work on behalf of his clients that are owners and developers of the property north of my client's property. We were reluctant to agree to continuance, but heard the commission loud and clear that the desire of this commission was that the parties get together to work out their differences. So my client and I spent significant time, effort, money. Looks like we're losing another commissioner. Okay, we still have six. All right. That's enough. It's unfortunate, but it's enough. We spent a lot of time, effort, and money getting ready for a meeting, in a meeting that was requested by this commission, in a meeting that we hoped would be fruitful, that we could talk about the issues, the issues being the concerns they have with our planned unit development master design statement, only to arrive to the meeting and be told with no uncertain terms that they were not willing to discuss in any manner the PUD document unless my client was willing to participate financially in their assessment district. While I maintain that this commission, nor the city council, has any authority in a zoning case to require my client to pay money to connect to a public street, I insisted again, can we please talk about the issues relevant to the PUD that you may be concerned with? And was told again that, and I quote, "We're not willing to talk about the PUD unless we, you are willing to participate in our improvement district financially." So we're negotiating against ourselves. And so we went back to the drawing board, listening to the concerns that were raised by the planning commission last time. One of the concerns that struck us was maybe some of the uses. So we have taken out a few more of the uses. We've taken out the custom manufacturing. We have added some language to the Eden Establishment Fast Food Drive-Thru so that it can't be your traditional drive-thru. What we've said is it has to be limited to small sandwich shops, coffee shops, delicatessence, and other similar-sized businesses. Again, it's the, the only way to say it is it's the Starbucks model. I don't think people are offended by Starbucks, but what they don't want is a typical fast food drive-thru. Additionally, we eliminated the outdoor sales display and outdoor storage. The other issue raised was signage. So we limited our signage to three signs, all freestanding, limited to eight feet, limited to 150 square feet in area. The other issue raised was perhaps the density. Originally, we had 550 units. What we've done is modified it to a total of 390 units, only 200, 290 of which could be multifamily. What that leaves us with in terms of our PUD compared to the PUD north of us is we are significantly less in terms of uses, we are significantly less in terms of density, we are significantly less, or excuse me, significantly more restrictive in terms of architectural requirements. What is required in our PUD is the typical 70% masonry-type products, 30% the other. The only architectural requirements in the PUD approved north of our site is flexibility. At one point in the meeting, Mr. Work's client said, well, why won't you just agree to the language in our PUD? Which I responded, I absolutely will. If you're willing to add more uses than we have, take away more restrictions that we have in our PUD, and give us a much looser PUD than is currently before the city, at which time he clearly realized that he didn't understand the two PUD documents that were before him. The only other issue that I can see that would be of concern that I've heard is the city, planning commission, doesn't want garden-style apartments. While that is hard to define what a garden-style apartment is, if we look to the Chisholm Creek PUD, perhaps they did a good job of defining what it is and what cannot be. That is found in section 9.1.4 of PUD 1515. We are willing to adopt that wholeheartedly.
What does it say?
I will read it. Apartment buildings commonly known and referred to in the industry as garden-style apartments shall not be allowed within this PUD. For this purpose, garden-style apartments shall be defined as those having these similar characteristics: three floors, three floors or less without an elevator, and access to individual apartments, including those above the ground floor via external visible entries and staircases, and typical setbacks from property lines or street curbs of more than 25 feet, and large service parking lots located around and between the apartment buildings. Should any project be proposed that would not be a garden-style apartment but may somehow have all the characteristics previously discussed, then the planning commission would make a determination as to appropriateness considering the overall development plan and concept on a project-by-project basis at the specific plan review stage. Townhomes brownstone-style residences shall be permitted. Townhome brownstone-style residences shall be defined as homes attached to other homes with ownership to individual townhomes brownstone-style residences conveyed by fee simple title. We agree to adopt that wholeheartedly. The only caveat I would say is when you have a portion of it here that would face south that wouldn't front on that boulevard, I would submit that there's no chance to lease that space for office or commercial, so we would ask for that to not have to be space that would just never be leased. But anything that would front on the boulevard or front on those public streets, we would agree to adopt their provisions. My, my client has absolutely no interest whatsoever in development of garden-style apartments. They continue to work on development renderings, it's on this board and as well as on the screen before you, to show you what they intend as a true urban mixed-use style development.
So you'd be willing to bring that to us at a specific plan stage for approval, that kind of...
Absolutely. We commit in our PUD to the specific plan, and so we can add these general concepts to the PUD so that when we do come back at the specific plan, everybody knows what general concepts we were referring to.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Let's hear from Mr. Work if...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson Suite 304. And I am here representing the owners of the Chisholm Creek Mixed Use Development, which is the 159-acre tract that's immediately north of this subject property across Highland Park Boulevard. And I know there were a couple of you that were not in attendance at last, the last meeting where we talked about our concerns, but let me just briefly state what we are concerned about, what the, the Chisholm Creek development, of course, is, is a master-planned mixed-use development of retail, commercial, restaurant, entertainment, office, medical uses, and the, um, the, um, oh, the message that the Chisholm Creek markets, their project, is a live-work-play environment. So they are intending to create a, an area where people can live and work and have entertainment opportunities in a walkable, bikeable environment. They, they are endeavoring to create a development that will set a new standard for this region for mixed-use development. And as a practical matter, this 16-acre tract that is proposed now to front onto Highland Park Boulevard with this application will be perceived by the public as a part of Chisholm Creek. So our concern is just to make sure that it is developed in a way that is compatible both in terms of the mix of uses and also in terms of the, of the quality and character. And as Mr. Box mentioned, we did have a meeting. We were unable to come to terms about the issues that we feel are important to address in connection with this development, and one of those does relate to the improvement district that has been put in place that is now just a year old, that is, that through which the funding was provided for all of these public improvements in this area, including the streets, the utilities, the landscaping, and, and other of the public improvements. But we weren't able to come to terms on that, but we, we do have concerns about the, about the PUD, and particularly with respect to the multifamily residential that is proposed. It is proposed to be a highly dense multifamily project, and there's very little that's provided presently in the PUD about the type and character. And I'm just hearing for the first time from Mr. Box that they are proposing to include the language that was included in the Chisholm Creek PUD that disallows garden-style apartments, and that was a particular point that, that a good deal of time and energy was spent in the negotiation on the Chisholm Creek PUD. So I think that's a good thing. That's a positive, and that's one of the things that we have been advocating, is that that type of restriction that was included in the Chisholm Creek PUD also be included in this proposed PUD to make it at the same level of restriction as is imposed on the Chisholm Creek PUD. I disagree with Mr. Box's characterization that this proposed PUD is more restrictive than Chisholm Creek. I don't think that's an accurate characterization. Just one of the things that I want to mention that, that is also a requirement of the Chisholm Creek PUD, one of the concerns of the commission when Chisholm Creek was going through the process was the, it was proposed to be mixed-use development for the 159 acres, and so that was to include multifamily and office and commercial and entertainment-type uses. And one of the valid concerns that you all had as commissioners was that, to make sure that it just didn't become a sea of multifamily apartments and that the other uses that were planned didn't come along with it. So one of the provisions in the Chisholm Creek PUD, as I mentioned last time, is that there is a ratio that requires that the multifamily be done only in conjunction with the commercial and office that is developed. So there's a ratio that is provided in the PUD that, that in order to be permitted to develop a single multifamily unit, there has to be so many square feet of commercial, so many square feet of office, and that ratio is built into the PUD. With respect to the density, Mr. Box made a reference to that. I just want to mention that there, there is a cap in the Chisholm Creek PUD of 1,200 multifamily units over the entire 159 acres, and that works out to about seven and a half units an acre. So what they're proposing, even with the reduction in density that they have made since the last meeting, it's still a pretty dense multifamily development at just over 24 units an acre. So what we are suggesting is that the, is merely that the, that this proposed PUD for Highland Park Village be subject to restrictions that are no less effective and no less strong than what the Chisholm Creek PUD is with respect to the multifamily uses and with respect to this linkage of the multifamily with the commercial and office. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Briefly, I do need to address the, the TEs. There are four, all of which we're fine with, but the one relating to setbacks, spoke to staff. What we need to modify that to, if there is a willingness, is that it only apply south and east. Obviously, we don't want to setback on the, you know, the front. We want to be able to bring it to a urban-type style as well as on the west, because there is nothing on the west. In terms of the, the cap, they, they have 100-plus acres, and yes, the PUD says that they're limited to 1,200, except what Mr. Work didn't say is the provision that they worked into the PUD is that they can amend the application and amend the PUD, i.e. administratively. They can add an additional 240 multifamily units without coming back before this commission. So they can essentially add what we're proposing to do with no additional oversight.
What would likely happen, though, David, is if that were to be suggested by the applicant to the staff, the staff would realize that's probably a significant enough proposed change that they would want to bring it back to the commission, which they're free to do.
We would hope so, too, but as they, they have drafted it, it wouldn't require that. Legally, they could do it without. So in, in terms of the concern about there being just the apartment and not the commercial, I believe by agreeing to the provisions that it wouldn't be the garden-style, we've satisfied that. Because if it's not garden-style, it means it has to be a mixed use. That means there has to be an element of commercial on the first floor, meaning you can't build the second, third, and fourth floors without a first floor. So I think that we've satisfied that concern, if that's a real concern. And so with that, I think what's before you is a PUD that is no less restrictive, perhaps more restrictive, than what's approved north. Again, it requires us to come back for a specific plan to this commission, to see the design component of it, to ensure that what we propose is not the garden-style. And if what we come back with was garden-style, you'd have every legal right to deny that. But that's not what you're going to see. And so with that, I would ask for the approval, subject to the modification of the setback TE.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Box or Mr. Work?
I just had one. The ratio of multifamily to commercial that Kelly mentioned that applies at Chisholm Creek, I didn't hear you address that point. I don't know if you want to. I don't know if you want to. If you don't care to, it's fine, but I just, he raised the point, so I was curious.
The ratio works because you have a large 100-plus acre development. And what the concern was is that you not just have, a good example of what happened at Quell Springs, north of Quell Springs, there wasn't a ratio. You had a total number of residential units that could be built. It also requires some form of commercial, but not with the ratio. And so what happened was all of the multifamily units got eaten up with no commercial ever being built. And so what you saw was a systematic approach of rezoning cases, because nobody could come back with one more residential unit, because there was none left. So the ratio doesn't work necessarily on a small tract. What ensures that you won't have that is not having a garden-style apartment. You get to the same place.
Kelly?
Just one point of clarification. Under the PUD as it's presently written in response to Commissioner Hensley's question, there's not any requirement under the PUD presently that's proposed that would require any commercial. So it allows commercial as a permitted use, but it doesn't require it. So just so that's clear, if this PUD is approved, it could be entirely and exclusively a multifamily residential.
David?
I would disagree, and we can stipulate however we can. Again, you can't build a second floor without a first floor, and if we're willing to commit that it's not garden-style, which would say residential on the first floor, then it has to be something other than residential on the first floor, meaning it has to be a mixed-use concept. I don't know how I can say it more plainly than that. We couldn't do straight multifamily, because again, that would violate the provision that we agreed to, that you not have residential on the first floor. And so if you don't have residential on the first floor, what do you have? Some other use. As far as I know, developers still like making money on all the square footage they build, so there would be something.
So for clarification, the PUD presently says that there will be no residential on the first floor?
That would be incorporated through what we are willing to incorporate, the no-garden-style language. We can add a TE into, from their PUD, the 9.1.4. But we're willing to commit that there will be some use other than residential on the first floor where it fronts the boulevard.
Not to quibble, but the definition that defines garden-style apartments in the Chisholm Creek PUD that disallows them, it does not require that the development, or it doesn't have anything that says that there must be commercial on the first floor. It just says, it just provides a definition of what a garden-style apartment is and disallows those. So I think the disagreement that I have with what Mr. Box has said is that merely by adopting the definition of what is a garden-style apartment and saying those would not be allowed as provided in the Chisholm Creek PUD, that does not require any commercial development. That is a separate provision of the Chisholm Creek PUD that has this ratio that requires that there be commercial and/or office in conjunction with the multifamily. So just the adoption of the garden-style apartment prohibition, that language does not address whether or not commercial will be allowed or required or not. That's the point I want to make.
So if he incorporates your language from Chisholm Creek as to what is not a garden-style apartment, and then we have a TE that says commercial shall be on the first floor facing the boulevard, that would...
Then you get it.
Pardon me?
I think you make it then. But if you don't have the second part of that, you could build a non-garden-style apartment on the first floor. That's, you know, I get it. You could build a brownstone-looking apartment house, which would not be garden-style, but would be residential on the first floor.
So...
So I think you're going to need something that says, hey, you got to have some commercial on the first floor.
Maybe we could do, add two TEs. One, we adopt the no-garden-style apartment.
Yep.
Two, where fronting the boulevard, the first floor shall be a use permitted in the PUD other than residential.
Okay.
I think that makes it.
Yeah. With those additions and that TE, do we need to add that, or can we do it with that TE?
Well, with...
With additional two TEs, we move for adoption.
You just did it.
And then modify the setback TE.
Yes, on the...
To only apply south and east.
And also modify the setback, so, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 14 as conditioned. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
It's approved.
And item 15 is a public hearing in the adoption of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2017 to 2021. And Doug Dowler, our budget director, is here to answer any questions.
Right, good morning. Yes, well, good morning, or good afternoon, Chairman and Commission members. We had a workshop several weeks ago where we, departments presented their projects in the five-year capital plan, and it was, again, just to remind you, $2.8 billion over the next five years, with the largest piece of that coming from the Utilities Department. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. The council is now receiving some of those same presentations that were given to you over the next few weeks, and so we'll take your recommendations after they've received those presentations, and then they'll be adopting the plan, assuming you recommend it and approve it as well. So be happy to answer any questions or discuss things as needed.
Any comments or questions? We had a pretty thorough presentation from a whole range of department heads.
And I was just going to say, they did such a wonderful job with the presentation, and I think, I feel very comfortable with this. So if nobody else wants to be heard on it, I'll move approval.
Okay, so it's a resolution forwarding this for adoption? I guess this goes to council next? No motion and a second? Cast your votes.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Planning Commissioners, anything today to discuss?
I, you know, I couldn't help but listen to the last item, and I think it goes back to the point I was trying to make earlier about the mixed-use thing. I think we need to find a way, or maybe it's several ways, and maybe, you know, which particular way we choose will vary with the application. But when we're looking at mixed-use proposals, I think we want to have some kind of reassurance that they'll end up being mixed-use proposals and not all of one thing or another.
Can we do that through the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
Not grant that until the commercial goes in?
Development services, NADA, municipal council, nothing. Citizens to be heard. Were you just observing this today? Well, welcome. Come back anytime. And we are ready to adjourn at 3:49.